All right, ladies and gentlemen, I will call this meeting of the Buchanan City Council to order at 7 o'clock. As we normally do, we'll start off with a moment of silent prayer meditation and then the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. We always like to see a crowd with us for our city council meetings. I am not seeing anyone signed up that isn't already going to be on the presentation list, so I'll move on to our first item for business, which is our recognized guest. It's a special presentation tonight.
Public hearing.
Oh, yes, yes, of course. What am I looking at? Public hearing of ordinance 390, the fire protection service fees. Very important, thank you very much. Do I have any citizens that would like to speak out or discuss the public hearing on ordinance 390, our fire protection service fees? I'll ask one last time. Do I have anyone that would like to speak out or discuss the public hearing ordinance for 390, fire protection service fees? Hearing 9, I will close the public hearing for ordinance 390, fire protection service fees. I will now move on to our next thing on do, which is our recognized guest. It's a special privilege for me to introduce Mr. Peter Brown from Sudenlake. He has a presentation of the Stockard Youth Center, for the Stockard Youth Center, and I'm going to ask that our city councilman Pam Kapari take the honors, because it is your committee that we are so graced to have, as far as part of what we're talking about was Stockard Youth Center. So Pam?
Well, I went to Mr. Peter Brown after one of our meetings one night, because I'm working on the Fourth of July event, and we need money for our fireworks. So I saw Peter Brown after one of our meetings, and thought, a light went off, and I thought, I'm going to ask Mr. Peter Brown from Sudenlake if he could help us out. And he has graciously brought me a check already, and he wants to show you a copy of what he's given to for the Stockard Youth Center.
Well, why don't you come on down here? And we'll...
Yeah.
How super is that? So, we're really, really happy that we're able to present this check to the city in the Stockard Youth Center particularly, and help them out, because I know in the last several years, we were unable to provide fireworks. Certainly an expensive proposition to do that. So when Pam caught me on her way home after a meeting, and asked if we could step up, and I asked her how much she was needing, and so we were just in a position to do that. So Pam, I'd like to present this check to you for $5,000. I think with the funds that you'll, and the help that you'll be able to solicit from other businesses, that'll help put you over the top in this endeavor, and I'll have a great time on the Fourth of July in Buchanan this year. How about it?
Woo! You're very welcome. Can you get a picture of him together on the check? Can you make a good picture of that? Everybody, where's our...
We good?
Pam, I want to make sure that we recognize the fact of all the work that you've done on the Fourth of July committee, this just being one step of. I am so looking forward to our city celebrating the Fourth of July this year, and having fireworks downtown, where there's no parking fees, everybody downtown, and hopefully at Festival Friday, we'll have the opportunity to see the fireworks. And I want the citizens of Upsher County and Buchanan to realize that the cities stepped up this year and decided to do it. We're halfway there. There are other events that are also going to be happening that week, that day, Friday the 3rd of July. We were a little late on getting the fireworks for the Fourth of July, but it's going to be in conjunction with Festival Fridays, which there will be a lot more celebrating going on as well. But it's a traditional Fourth of July celebration, so we're going to have pie eating contests, hot dog eating contests. We'll have the youth, something new. We're going to have the youth and adults that may do four-wheeling or motocross racing, showing their vehicles as well, because they love to show that off. That's something that's really unique around here, and it's a well-participated sport. I will call it a sport, because you know, you get prizes and whatnot for it. So, I just wanted to say thank you, Pam, for all the work you've been doing on it. I would encourage any other citizens, if they would still like to contribute or volunteer for this event, please do call Pam Kapari or myself or City Hall, and we'll make sure that we find a way to help you out with that. All right?
I just want to add...
Please.
This would have been the fourth year Buchanan would not have had fireworks. And I'm hearing constantly, no fireworks, no fireworks. So I decided I would step up to the plate. I'm trying my best to make a successful event. Hopefully, it will be the beginning of an annual event at Buchanan. And we are doing it in conjunction with Stockard Youth Center, and we're wanting to bring some, you know, insight to people, see what goes on at Stockard Youth and what all we do. But we also wanted to do something different that, you know, the kids are never recognized for things as much as adults sometimes around here. So we have the car shows all the time, so I thought, oh, let's do something for the kids. So there is a lot of kids around who have four-wheelers or have the dirt bikes, and we thought that'd be great for them to bring their downtown, to show them off. And from what I'm hearing, the kids are just tickled to death, and it brings the people down, and we'll hopefully have a crowd for our Fourth of July, actually on July 3rd, though.
Ms. Bray, I'd like to say that it certainly is going to be nice to have fireworks in town in someplace other than City Hall.
Absolutely, absolutely. I agree. We got a whole lot of...
To get that.
Ladies and gentlemen, council, I will ask that, under B2, we have Mrs. Anne Worley, who you all got to meet municipally president. She's asked that, perhaps she can give her presentation towards the end, because she really wants to hear the business that we have tonight. She has about a five, 10-minute presentation for us, so if it's all right with you, without objection, we'll move her down to comments, and I'm sure you'll be disappointed, but I'll let her have my comments, so that way you don't have to hear from me tonight. All right? So next, we have a presentation from our Animal Care and Control Commission, which happens to do with ordinance 300. I will introduce Maria Bray, who's been leading up our committee on this. As you may know, and I'll give a little background, 2001 was the last time that any business had been done with the Animal Care and Control Commission, and there had been some issues that had come up that we felt needed to be dealt with. So Mrs. Bray, Mrs. Keough, and Mrs. Mills, who are all members of our commission, stepped up and said, you know what? And they are very much pet lovers and very much educated on the ways and means by which you should perhaps link up your pets. So I would leave before Mrs. Bray for recommendations from that commission on ordinance 300.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, good evening, and thank you very much for this opportunity, which you've made available to us on top of an already full agenda. My name, as you know, is Maria Bray, and I am here tonight as one of the representatives of the Buchanan Animal Care and Control Commission. We are discussing revising and updating ordinance 300, which is also known as the Animal Care, Animal Control Ordinance. This ordinance was enacted in 2001 to address animal-related problems and concerns within our community. This ordinance was and is beneficial to our community, and as with any living document, the time has come to update and expand to better meet the circumstances and changes that have occurred since its inception. There is a written outline in each of your packets, and I ask that you will take the time to read and carefully consider your adoption of these recommendations, but for the sake of brevity, I will refrain from reading all six pages. And with the help of Robin Keough and Alyssa Mills, who are also members of the Control Commission, we will summarize each of the five items to allow for questions and discussion. The two I've put together as one and two are the breed-specific language and the dangerous dog definition. Now, at the time of the ordinance's creation, type of breed was used to identify dogs who have the most potential for becoming a danger to others. Specifically, our ordinance presumes pit bulls as such a breed. The term for these types of laws is breed-specific legislation, and our ordinance in its current form is that type of legislation. Current research suggests that there are other factors beyond breed which may affect a dog's tendency toward aggression. In a study conducted by the CDC, they found that more than 70% of all dog bite cases involve unneutered male dogs. An unneutered male dog is 2.6 times more likely to bite than is a neutered dog. A chained or tethered dog is 2.8 times more likely to bite than a dog who is not chained or tethered. 97% of dogs involved in fatal dog attacks in 2006 were not spayed or neutered. 78% were maintained not as pets, but rather for guarding, image enhancement, fighting, or breeding. And 84% were maintained by reckless owners. These dogs were abused or neglected, not humanly controlled or contained, or were they allowed to act with children unsupervised. Leaders in animal research and advocacy, such as the ASPCA, the American Bar Association, and the American Kennel Club, find that breed-specific legislation is not an effective approach to regulating dogs' behavior in our communities. Although such bans might comfort individuals who have had unpleasant experiences with particular breeds, or those who have heard of attacks by specific dog breeds in the media, these bans do not effectively regulate the behavior of any breed of dogs or their owners. The bans carry with them too much potential for arbitrary or improper enforcement. There is inaccurate breed identification by officials, difficulty in enforcing breed bans against mixed-breed dogs, court system overload, and the potential for not identifying a genuinely dangerous dog as such because it doesn't fall in the specific breed parameters. And unfortunately, large breeds of dogs, such as Doverbins, German Shepherds, and Pit Bulls, are popularly believed to be dangerous, and therefore may be judged more severely than the little coven ones. Notably, two states, Minnesota and Oklahoma, have actually prohibited local governments from adopting ordinances that regulate dangerous dogs based solely on the breed of dog. Therefore, we are requesting that all breed-specific language be removed from the Animal Control Ordinance, rendering it breed-neutral or behavior-based. Okay, moving on to three. Remember breed. We'd also like to simplify the procedure for declaring a dog dangerous. Currently, the process of having a dog declared dangerous is set in motion by a formal complaint. This is followed by an investigation, after which the mayor hears the evidence and determines whether or not the dog is dangerous under the terms of law. If a dog is found to be dangerous, the mayor will order the owner to take measures to prevent the dog from injuring anyone, and require the owner to comply with special guidelines and restrictions outlined in the Animal Care Ordinance. This commission is recommending that the evaluation of evidence and dangerous dog determination be under the jurisdiction of the municipal court rather than the mayor. A magistrate's court is a lower court where in most jurisdictions, all criminal proceedings start. Also, some civil matters may be dealt with in this forum as well. We believe that the court is a more appropriate venue for handling this type of situation, and would align our ordinance with common practice and the view of the magistrate's court's authority as expressed in Chapter 19, Article 20, Section 20 of the West Virginia Code. At this point, I will temporarily yield the floor to Robin Keough. Robin is also a member of the Animal Care and Control Commission, and she's an active animal rescue volunteer, an outstanding animal advocate, whose zeal and compassion has enriched our community through education, service, and becoming a voice for those who cannot speak.
I'm requesting that the city council bears with me for a moment while I give some background information. My part of this change is the amendments that I'm requesting deals primarily with prohibiting the tethering and chaining of dogs 24/7. It would prohibit the continuous chaining of dogs. It would only allow chaining of dogs under certain guidelines and with certain provisions. First, I would like to talk about the West Virginia Animal Welfare Laws. Under the West Virginia Animal Welfare Laws, under crimes against chastity, morality, and decency as cruelty to animals, I'm just going to read a portion of this. It says, "If any person cruelly mistreats, abandons, or withholds proper sustenance, including food, water, shelter that protects from the elements of weather, or medical treatment necessary to sustain normal health and fitness, or cruelly chains or tethers any animal, is guilty of a messed demeanor." Now, I want to show you something that came into the Lewis Upsher pound on a dog. I've already shown this to Mr. Thomas, he's felt it. It's a heavy gauge chain that was around a dog's neck. I'm going to ask that you pass it around. Okay, the cruelly chained part. I've spoken with the sheriff about this. I've made numerous complaints about dogs in the county, and to sheriff deputies. And the law enforcement seems willing to enforce the law, but they are not willing to interpret the law, and that is not their job. I believe the legislatures in West Virginia took the time to write the law, but they did make it a little vague, which left the communities room to amend this statute to fit the needs of the community and the standards of the community. And I think Buchanan is a humane community, and it's time to amend this. What would the average person consider cruel? I think the average person in Buchanan would consider this cruel. And as God is my witness, I have seen a dog tethered with a hook like this. As God is my witness. It's about an eight-foot chain, and I want to tell you, I have trespassed. I have gone on a dog's property where this eight-foot chain was about four feet long, tangled up, and that dog had about four feet of room to maneuver. I want to tell you what I've read about huskies. Huskies can travel up to 20 miles in a day, and to sentence a husky to a lifetime of an eight-foot perimeter, I think most reasonable people would say that is cruelly chained. If our legislatures were not referring to this as cruelly chained, I would like to know what they were referring to. Do we have to cruelly chain a dog, what, through a nose ring? What would cruelly chained be? I know this is uncomfortable, but I would appreciate it if you all would feel this, and imagine this around your neck 24/7.
I'm not going to hurt my back left in this.
I know in West Virginia, I think we're a polite society in many ways. I think we have a habit of minding our own business, and we want to look away from things that are unpleasant, or rude, or shameful, and we do tend to avert our eyes. But this is one time I think we need to look and see what cruelty is. And as far as I'm concerned, we're still a Christian nation under God, and animals are God's creation too. His special creation. I don't think He means for us to disrespect them and to treat them cruel. I also have some pictures, and I know this might be uncomfortable to look at, but these animals suffered, and to maybe give some reasoning to why they suffered, I want you to look at them. I don't think this is adequate shelter. I'm asking that our city code defines what adequate shelter is, and that is part of what I have defined on our proposal. A metal barrel is not adequate shelter.
Before you move on, are those all local pictures?
No, they are not.
Nationwide pictures?
Virginia, from Dogs Deserve Better. I have permission to use them. Actually, someone here has local pictures that are just as horrendous, but we do not have permission to use those. So that is why I did not, I have copyright permission. This is a dog that's padlocked. In my proposal, I suggest that should not be allowed. In case of emergency situations, if dogs had to be evacuated, Katrina, dogs drowned because they could not be evacuated. Dogs don't need to be padlocked. At the pound, we've gotten dogs in with embedded collars. When dogs are left out, it's a failure of adoption. It's not right. Dogs are neglected. It's just not right. I have a quote by Bondi, "The greatness of a nation and its moral progress can be judged by the way its animals are treated." And I would like to change that to, "The greatness of a town and its moral progress can be judged by the way its animals are treated." I think we can do better. Just a little digression. In the West Virginia law, there's a section on euthanasia by carbon monoxide, which happily there are very few gas chambers left in West Virginia. But they took great care to make sure that it was done in a humane manner. It said there had to be a window, so the technician could witness that the animals were being euthanized properly and humanely. Anesthesia was recommended, sedation before the euthanasia. It said, "Have all partitions, cages, and carriers thoroughly cleaned after each use before placing another animal into them to minimize the animal's fear and stress. In the chamber should only be placed animals, compatible animals of the same species, and not to place into the chamber with other animals that have already been euthanized to minimize their fear and stress." So it seems the people that took the time to write the laws considered the animals had feelings, and they feel fear and stress. I think a lifetime of subjecting a dog to social isolation, being chained 24/7, is cruel, and animals have feelings. I don't think the cruelty in this law refers only to physical cruelty, not just the overt acts of cruelty on an animal, but also the emotional aspects, and I'm winding down here. When dogs are chained 24/7, they suffer social isolation. They're pack animals. We've domesticated them, we've made them dependent on us. We've taken away the right to hunt, the joy of the chase, the right to migrate, find their own dwellings. A dog on his own would find a better dwelling than a metal barrel. He's going to dig himself a cave. He's going to have a mate. He's going to have pups. He's going to feed himself. You don't have to have a dog, but if you opt to have a dog, there are responsibilities beyond giving it a bowl of kibble once in a while. You know, I know this would be a difficult legislation to enforce, but I don't see that laws are only, I don't think you pick and choose which laws that you enact based on their ease of enforcement. Other cities have done this. You give a period of education, you give them a time limit that these standards are going to be met, or you will be cited. It has been done in other cities. Initially, they find there's a turnover, some animals get turned into the pound. I have found, when I make my rounds, I offer cedar chips to people in the winter, many people have said to me, "I wish someone would just take this dog." When the dog is out in the yard all winter or a summer, it's a failure. Most people are relieved if there's an option to rehome the dog. They don't want to deal with it, they don't want to admit they've made a mistake. People don't usually get a puppy and say, "In a couple months, I'm going to get tired of this dog, and I'm going to find a logging chain and chain it out." That represents a failure. And it'd be okay to admit your failure. I rehomed a dog. The time wasn't right, the dog wasn't right, I rehomed it. You know, legislation, we have to license our car, we have to get a license, we have to have it inspected every year. That's a drag, but it keeps our community safe. We don't have so many beater cars on the road. Same with car seats. People didn't want to get infant car seats for the babies. 1971, my sister-in-law's sister, young girl, 19-year-old mother, minor fender bender, drove her car off the side of the road, ran over her six-month-old baby, didn't have a car seat. Think of the lives that have saved with the car seats. When I was a nurse working OB, you do not take that baby home if you don't have a car seat. People squawked about it at first. "You mean I had to buy a car seat? They're expensive, blah, blah, blah." It's a lot saves lives.
I have to, just to make sure we're staying a little bit on...
I'm sorry.
Just to make sure we're staying a little bit on topic now. Your recommendations to council were, as far as the tethering guidelines, on which I think everybody has in your packet there, the adequate shelter, which is really well-defined as well. Now, are you also discussing the limited pet attendance at public events, or is that going to be Ms. Robin?
I think Maria's going to present that.
Maria, all right. And not to be rude or mean, but I think we're digressing a little bit from what the presentation to the council was.
I was going to make my point in just one minute.
Because you are very right on the tethering, and absolutely on the adequate shelter, and the outdoor pens, which I really want each one of these council members to take a look at and digest.
Okay.
But the car seats and we're kind of moving along.
Well, that was just my point, that things are difficult to enforce, but then eventually it gets the public support. Chained animals, as Maria said, are dangerous. They're unsocialized, territorial, prone to aggression. Attacks often occur when a child enters the territory, the dog is chained. It's been unsocialized, often it's not neutered. Everything's been taken away from that dog, except neutering, and he's become neurotic, aggressive. The American Veterinary Medical Association, which is the premier group of veterinarians, says, "Never tether or chain your dog because this can contribute to aggressive behavior." The USDA says, "Continuous confinement of dogs by a tether is inhumane." 1997, the USDA disallowed chaining as a primary source of confinement under the U.S. Animal Welfare Act. The Centers for Disease Control cited the statistics, chained dogs 2.8, 2.6 times more likely to bite. Many cities have made these changes. I have here, I will pass out, Berkeley County has, we practically adopted it from them, Moundsville, Huntington, and Charleston, plus the city of New York, the state of Connecticut, San Antonio, Texas. It's across the country. Laws are changing. We've spread information, chaining a dog is not the way to go. You don't have to have a dog, but if you have one, you have to treat it humanely. So, in summary, it might be difficult to enforce this, but is that a reason not to address cruelty? Other cities have advised citizens, made a period of time to make changes, or rehome the dog, and the results show, there's a study, the dog bites decreased, which is, you know, what we wanted, and the dogs had better living conditions. My last question is, are we a humane community or not? Maria?
Alyssa's close.
Alyssa?
Alyssa, you're not close.
And believe it or not, I'll probably be the shortest one. Oh, thank you, that was cool. Another thing that you will find is a tremendous benefit to not chaining a dog. How many people, and Robin, you're my neighbor, so you can't count on this, how many people in this room have to listen to a neighbor's dog that barks incessantly? Now, is that dog tied up? Chained out? Yeah, you're saying yours is. When dogs do that, it's not because the dog's mean, it's not because the dog's trying to keep the neighbors up, it's because the dog is frustrated. Now, in my case, it's that my dogs are social. Her dogs are social. I'm embarrassed to say this, but Maria's heard our dogs up where she lives. When one of our dogs go out, they let the other dogs know, and they meet at the fence, and they bark, and it's really noisy, but, you know, we chase them all, we all go out and get them and chase them back in. My point is, though, when you run into a dog, and there was one that there was a complaint on down around Bogus Street, and I think they might have... on down around Bogus Street, and I think they might have gotten rid of the dogs, which has worried me because I wonder what's happened to them. But the people moved in down there. They hadn't lived there very long. They had two dogs that were short-haired, which short-haired dogs should never be tied up outside. Not that it's good for long-haired either, but at least they've got a little bit of a coat that will buffer them from the cold. But these two dogs were put out and were left. Well, they would bark, and bark, and bark, and bark, and bark, and bark. It never stopped. Neighbors were complaining, and the bad part was, again, this was when it was extremely cold. Neighbors complained. They called the comm center. And several times, I drove down to see if I could see where the dogs were. Well, unfortunately, because where the property was placed, I couldn't without doing more than trespassing. I was going to have to cross a creek, and not that I'm beyond doing that. I've done that many times. And I'm going to stand right here and say too, because I asked the other night in the meeting, what is the most harsh punishment you can get for trespass or criminal theft or misdemeanor theft? Because if I see a dog in a bad situation, I'm going to try to get law enforcement involved, and then if that doesn't work, something's going to be done. It won't hurt the dog. Owners might not like it, but the dog's not going to continue to be mistreated, not as long as I've got a breath in my body. But we need to look at the fact that when you live close to a dog that barks constantly, nine times out of 10, actually probably 98% of the time, the dog's tied up, it has no human socialization, it has no companionship of any kind, it's never taken off the chain, and it's frustrated, frustrated beyond belief. And if you don't think you could comprehend that, my suggestion would be, pick a closet in your house, go in there, have somebody lock you in and just leave you there for, I don't know, two, three, four days, however long it takes before you're banging your head on the wall saying, "Please, for God's sakes, let me out. I can't take it anymore." Problem is, somebody might let you out. They don't let the dog off the chain.
Our fifth and final recommendation is to protect pets by limiting their attendance at public events. A noisy, crowded, and often heated environment is no place for dogs or other pets, for their sake, as well as people who would like to have a pet-free environment. Hot pavement is not good for their paws, and even the most socialized dog might become stressed and lose their cool when interacting with other dogs or crowds of humans, especially curious children. One concern is that dogs don't sweat the same way we do. That might be a good thing. But they regulate their body temperature through panting, and they sweat through their paws. So in a situation like that, a dog would need to be well-watered and given shade at times. Furthermore, while some pets have had the benefit of obedience training and adequate socialization, many have not. So in the interest of safety, both the public and our pets, the Animal Care and Control Board recommends that no pets, including but not limited to reptiles, arachids, except certified service animals, will be permitted at sanctioned, regulated public events such as the Strawberry Festival, the Carnival, Festival Fridays, and other such events. The pet restriction would not apply to animals contracted by the city for events, animals that public officials use to perform their duties, and it would not apply to dogs who are muzzled and leashed. In addition to these changes, the commission encourages and supports education and information outreach. I understand that an informative brochure is already in process that law enforcement and the public can use. I don't want to hear six months from now that I do not have because I do not ask. So I am asking that you accept all five recommendations presented, vote to move to the next step in the process by instructing our city attorney to incorporate these recommendations reworded as appropriate, and amend Ordinance 300 of the City of Buchanan and pass the amended ordinance upon public reading. I thank you for your time and attention.
So you have before you, as well as the recommendations, a memo from Judge Levine, who's also been very much involved in our process throughout. We are going to allow you to digest this and think about it, but what I would ask is, first of all, do any of council have any questions on the presentation as it has been given, comments or questions to any of the commission members?
I don't have any questions because I've been following it pretty closely, but I do want to say thank you to all of you because, you know, your spirit, your dedication, your love of animals, and I'm an animal lover too, but you ladies are way out. But, you know, I know it exists. We know child abuse exists, okay? And it's the same thing with the animals, and that's wrong too. I don't know what we can do all here tonight, but I just wanted to say thank you for the hours, hours, and hours that all of you have put into this, and to come before us and speak and share.
That's very good, because we've been working on this for about six months now in total, and when they came to me with it, keep in mind, from 2001, this ordinance has not been changed. That's why some of the language really needs to be changed. Before we go anywhere else, though, Mr. McCauley did get to sit into our last commission meeting, and of course, he was the author of the very first Ordinance 300 and the circumstances surrounding that. And without much objection, Mr. McCauley agreed, but I would open the floor to you that if this council were to allow you and Judge Levine cooperatively to write up a draft of a new amended ordinance 300, would that be objectionable to you?
I think most of what the group is advancing are...you have to remember, when we put together what was the most comprehensive animal care and control ordinance back in 2000, some of these state statutes didn't exist. The state caught up to what was happening at the local level, and our Buchanan ordinance, we actually sent it to Huntington and Moundsville and a couple of the other places. So they're probably ahead of us now because we haven't done anything with it in almost 15 years. So I think the breed-specific thing, the American Insurance Institute, back in 2000, that was probably the most outspoken body about the breed-specific stuff, and there's still parts of the insurance industry that you'll pay a higher premium if you have a Rottweiler, or a pit bull, or a Doberman. That's the fact of the matter. But almost as Mrs. Keough observed, or rather, as Mrs. Bray observed, the American Kennel Club, American Veterinary Association, you name it, American Bar Association, I noticed that they didn't mention that the White House and President Obama is against breed-specific. I counseled them the other night. I said, "You might not tell them that Obama is..."
We listen.
But anyway, the whole nature of addressing breed-specific has changed 180 degrees in the last 15 years. So I have no issues with that component at all. I think as we get into how much the municipal court can do, we have to be very careful. Of all of the courts that comprise the West Virginia judiciary, whether it's the Supreme Court of Appeals, Circuit Court, Family Court, Magistrate Court, the most restrictive relative to jurisdiction, that is, the power that can be exercised by the court are municipal courts. They are strictly misdemeanor, criminal courts. Our municipal court, 99% of the stuff that comes before Judge Levine are parking and speeding and vehicular types of things. We can't give the municipal court authority that the state legislature hasn't already provided. That is to say, there can be no civil relief accomplished in a municipal court. Judge Levine can't issue a restraining order or injunctive relief. Does not have the authority to do that. Could we possibly advance some abilities under some restitution-type things, or think of it almost as a probationary thing? Somebody is accused of doing something like tethering their dog. Could he reasonably establish, on a case-by-case basis, the rules by which that dog will no longer be negatively treated? I think there's opportunity for that. I think we can, as long as we couch it in a criminal matter kind of a way, as opposed to trying to expand the authority into the civil or administrative law realm, if we keep it under the criminal umbrella, I think it's doable. The public event thing, I've heard folks who were aware of what the group was advancing, who have taken umbrage with not being able to take their little terrier down to Festival Fridays and all that kind of stuff. I mean, I see both sides of that part of things. The council's going to have to give some instruction as to what you want to do relative to the community. Do you want to point-blank adopt all five of these planks of these revisions, or do you want to compromise some of them? That's up to the council. I don't want to be put in the position of me making these value judgments and say, "Well, I don't agree with the commission on this. Let's do this." I think the council needs to weigh...
Well, let me ask you this. If we give you a draft, we gave you tonight permission to come up with a draft, but you just included that into it. We can always pull that out if we decide to adopt the ordinance after discussion and much consideration. We can have that part taken out as well, right?
Sure, absolutely.
So we can include it as part of a draft for now, which we're going to give, of course, the community plenty of opportunity to discuss this. We're not going to make any decisions on this immediately. It's going to take some time for Judge Levine and Mr. McCauley to come up with the draft for us to take a look at. So I think there's going to be plenty of opportunity for discussion on this, but what I would like to do at this point to advance our agenda is to entertain a motion to ask that Mr. McCauley and Mr. Levine, in cooperative spirit, draft amendments to or a new, would it be amendments to Ordinance 300 or a new?
It would be an mandatory ordinance to Ordinance 300.
A mandatory Ordinance 300, and bring it back to council for consideration.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by Mrs. Alba. Do I have a second?
I'll take that.
I have a second by Mrs. Simons. Now, any discussion on that or comments that you'd like to make, sir?
Discussion and a question statement. Festival Fridays, I've been there every night that we've had it. I've seen pets that were there with their owners or their mommy and daddy, as my daughter would say, and they were very well-behaved. I've also seen pets that were well-behaved get next to another animal, and immediately there's this friction between them, and they start snarling and snapping at each other, which causes some concern about parents, about their children being close to them and everything. So I've got a mixed bag there because I do think that if you have a well-behaved dog and you take care of it, that your rights are there, but if you've got one that isn't, I understand. I've also seen an anaconda down there at one time. I saw a white rat on a leash at one time, which I absolutely wanted to shoot, but I didn't. I didn't have a gun. So, you know, there are limits as to what should be allowed down there. Now, the other statement I want to ask, and I would, I'd be amiss to myself and some of my friends, if I did not bring this up, so please do not take offense at it or anything like that, but I would like to know that if your, are your views on the handling and the killing of an unborn child consistent with the handling of animals? I would like to state, are your views on killing unborn children, in other words, abortion, consistent with your concern for animals?
We're not talking about killing animals.
Well, I know what you're not, but I want to know if you're as concerned about unborn children as you are about animals.
Who are you asking?
I'm asking the committee.
I used to do sidewalk counseling in Los Angeles.
I have been asked to bring that up, and I would...
I'll answer that.
Yes, please.
When I lived in California, I did sidewalk counseling in front of an abortion clinic and tried to talk young women out of it. I supported a home for unmarried mothers. It's called His Father's Nest or something like that. This was in California like 30 years ago. I risked being arrested for my beliefs. I was never arrested, thank God, but the police were coming on horses, and I was there kneeling. I personally don't believe in abortion. I, that's my personal religious beliefs. I don't know what that has to do with here, but I had worked on that before.
I'm going to call a point of order. I'm sorry. And thank you for answering. You did not have to. You were not under any obligation to do so. And Mr. Pugh decided to throw out a question, and somebody did the answer. And I, excuse me, sir. I have the floor right now. And as much as you, I respect your ability to ask the question. I think you may have placed it in the, you may have been untactful about how you did it, but you got your question done. You got an answer, but I want to ask that, as a point of order, we move on from that discussion. You got the opportunity to ask it, so we will go ahead, and does anybody else have any comments?
I have two comments.
Okay, as long as we keep it within the realm of the discussion we're having on Ordinance 300, please.
Yeah, I really appreciate the time and effort that the three of you and other members of the commission put forth. I think one of the issues that need to be addressed also within the city and the county, I think this is an educational issue also, in that it needs to be in the curriculum, I think, of the elementary, middle school, and high school. This is a long-term problem that we have to address, and I think it's very important that we do address it. I would also suggest, I read 10 hours a day. The Library of Congress, since I've lost my vision 23 years ago, has just been, you know, it's a phenomenal scenario, but a book I've read that will, I think, really have people change how they view animals, specifically dogs, is The Genius of a Dog, and it's written by the two co-directors of Duke University's Canine Research Center for Cognitive Thinking. And the research out there is so unbelievable over the last 20 years, especially 10 years, about how really smart animals are. And just because we're human beings and we have certain abilities to communicate and so forth, we have no clue, we just scratch the surface about cognitive thinking in animals. And I just think that's something that you would be really...I don't know if the three of you have read that book, but it's a phenomenal book, and there's wonderful books out there about animals and their abilities to do that. And look at what they do with blind people, people in hospitals, the dogs in Afghanistan and Iraq. I mean, it's unbelievable, and they deserve our best of treatment. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Mrs. Kabor.
I'm a little bit torn with the fact that people bring their animals down to the parades or this, that, and the other, because, you know, like they said, animals need so much space, first of all, before they're feeling threatened or whatever. But, you know, I have a dog, and I love my dog, but I think it's unfair to take him down where it's so crowded that you got to worry about somebody stepping on their feet and everything else. But I did witness something, and I was ready to go get the police, but nothing happened. But there was two individuals on Saturday night, and I believe they were actually encouraging their two pit bulls to get into a fight, and it was right downtown in the middle of the street. So that's why I'm kind of against people allowing, bringing their big...
Take a picture of them with your cell phone.
Thank you, Mrs. Kabor. That's very insightful, and I tried to get the opportunity to watch. I never saw any incident with the animals, but it's good to know that somebody did.
I'll say thank you again, ladies. I apologize that you had to speak up, but that's okay if you're all right with it. I'm a dog lover. I've had two. I've never lost a child, but I've lost two dogs, and it broke my heart. That's all I'm going to tell you. When you raise one for 15 to 20 years, you know the difference. And thank you again, and our council for working on this. The only thing I don't want is a new ordinance that nobody pays attention to, and this council doesn't come together, discuss it, review it, and 10 years difference. If we're going to have an ordinance, I believe that Judge Levine is correct. We need to utilize it, obey it, adhere to it, or whatever, and make sure it works and monitor it.
I will mention to council that I did pass on the memos and the suggestions from the commission to Chief Gregory. He did not have any objections to them. The only one that he did was, of course, the public animals, but he would look at it, and he would obviously look at any ordinance that we finally drafted and come back with suggestions to us, whether it can be or not, can be enforced, as well as, I will be working, as Mrs. Bray alluded to, an informational package. Just so citizens understand, we're not going to immediately come out there and tell you that there's this new tethering ordinance and it's a violation of it. We're going to give you a citation immediately. What we will do is give you a pamphlet, unless it's a real...
Involved.
Yeah, unless it was really objectionable as to they should... Yeah, unless it was really objectionable as to they should get a citation, but they will get a pamphlet that explains the ordinance 300 to them so that they can actually take a look and they will not immediately be given that first citation unless it's really egregious. So, having said that, is there any other questions for the commission? Commission, Ms. Moore, has a question. For the commission?
I do have a comment. What Mr. Thomas said about educational materials and what you mentioned about an educational pamphlet, I have been buying, on behalf of Love for Animals, that's a group that I work with, educational pamphlets from the Humane Society of the United States and having a coloring contest in the schools. And we have covered every, two classes in every school in the county over the last two years. Took me two years, my own money, to have this coloring, the coloring costs like a dollar and quarter a piece, but they talk about responsible pet ownerships. Spay and neuter.
What age group?
Pardon me?
What age?
Probably up to about eight years old. It's written for children, but it does talk about spay and neuter, taking your dog to the vet, need for good food, exercise. One of them's called Keep Your Promises to Your Pet, and the other one is called How to Be a Helping Hand to Pets. Very good information to have, but I'm sure on dogs deserve better, they probably have some other things we could order and put it through the city.
There it is. That's a great idea. Mr. P, I have another question for the commission.
Does this have anything to do with us having to hire a dog warden or in any way will the county dog warden be responsible for any of these actions within the city?
It would be wonderful if the dog warden could be more proactive and do more education in the school systems. I hope sometime we would have a full-time, you know, animal control officer that would take the education as part of his job.
Let me clarify a couple of things. First of all, the dog warden, there is nothing in pertaining to dog wardens within our ordinance.
Right.
I will tell you this, that the county has been through three dog wardens in the last four months and they just got rid of the last one. He is also a member of this commission, but if they could keep one long enough, he would have been able to give us some input into. What else, sir?
I was just wondering if that was going to apply in the county as well.
We cannot regulate the county. Well, maybe we're going to.
I actually.
One last, please.
Again, I have pets. Everybody knows this, maybe a few too many. And I would lay down my life for any of them, but I think that once an ordinance like this is put out there and people start to realize that they're serious, it's only going to take one or two people being cited for cruelly tethering a dog or neglecting the dog or whatever before you see that there's less and less and less of it. It's just like people talking on cell phones. For the most part, people weren't doing it, and then the weekend festival, everybody did. But my thing is, I think that once the ordinance is in place, a little bit of education starts up, I think, I don't think you're going to need a full-time person driving around. You don't have a full-time person driving around now on a lot of other things. So, I don't think it's going to be that big of a deal.
And some animal rescue groups could help get them in compliance.
Yes. All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. We've got to move on because I've got another presentation yet and another one towards the end. I definitely want to thank those ladies for the work you've been doing. I've been in on your meetings, I've attended them all as the recorder. I certainly do appreciate it. We will take a look at the recommendations of the, of the, of the commission. We will do our due diligence, and I certainly hope this council comes back and lets me know and Mr. McCauley know what we want to have done after that draft. And by the way, we were under discussion, so I would ask for a vote at this point. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign, motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, ladies. Moving on, we have a board report, a department report from Tom Lend and Kelly Hunter. They had to beg off for tonight. They will be reporting that at another date. I would also defer off any comments on that until we have them here with us. Next, we have Tim Rock and Sam Ludlow of our sewer department, sanitation department. And they're going to discuss another presentation with you on stormwater information, something that's a big deal right now.
First of all, I'm going to talk to you about the sanitary sewer issues. Sam's going to present storms. And just an update on what's going on at the sanitary department. I think I reported to you all that the landfill flow meter had been installed but needed to be calibrated and made sure it was correct, reading correctly. We've done that. It's fully functional. It's working. That issue is gone. We are finalizing the paperwork to purchase the CSX Railroad on 33 West. It's just, it's, just needs some fine tuning on the paperwork. I think we're very close to purchasing more of the railroad grade. In fact, one of our crews is doing a sewer extension on a piece of the railroad grade that we already own out there as we speak. So, we hope to have more of that railroad grade to continue sewer upgrades. We finished a job we were doing at the Episcopal Church, Lincoln Street area. That's, that's all completed and successful, but that was a good project. I think I reported to you at the last meeting we were going to sell this 97 Ford dump truck that we have. That will be advertised tomorrow in the newspaper. We hope to sell that soon. Our grit collection, the Pistogrit, is finished, working. It's a great project. Did a lot of good at the sewer plant. We're very pleased with how that turned out. One of our next major projects is, we think we're going to do a pretty, pretty good sewer upgrade on West Victoria Street, kind of like a sewer issue that runs under Canal Street that we think we ought to do, kind of thinking about what the state's going to make a three-lane there, and we have a sewer that runs under that street. We don't want it to fail, so we're going to do an upgrade and change things around there, and we hope to have that done by the end of the summer. That's about all I have to report on the sanitary side.
Thank you, Mr. Rock. Any questions for Mr. Rock concerning the sanitary department? Any comments?
I just have one. Is there any way that we could get, when we've got these projects going on, that we could post them on our, do we post them on our city website?
What projects?
No, like the sewer, the job that was going on on Lincoln, you know, and maybe on the one coming up that's going to take most of the summer?
We've never posted anything like that. I mean, I could see a situation where public information, and we talked about that tonight, where if we're, want to block off a street, you know, we could put something like that due to a project, but we usually don't identify a project just because we're doing one, unless it's something we need to get out to the public.
Well, there's no reason why we can't do that as member of council, post it on our own, let them know.
And quite honestly, there's no reason why we can't do that either as well, but keep in mind, we just initiated a new website, so we're still trying to get used to it ourselves and do that. It's not like the old website where it was normally done. So, keep that in mind. As we grow in our, in our website, we'll be able to do more and more of that. Mr. Rock, thank you very much for your time, sir, and the work you do. Mr. Ludlow, sir, let's talk a little bit about stormwater.
Well, I just made a few comments about storm sewers. Basically, as information, storm sewers are a pretty big issue off and on. It's raining today, so they're a big issue. It's kind of a mixed activity for the city. City's quite involved relative to an ordinance that was passed in 1982, which controlled discharge of storm water on almost any property. Then in 1995, we adopted a, another ordinance in which there was a permitting system, standards for construction of stormwater facilities. And that has been followed pretty rigorously since that time. We've also, the general fund has contracted with the Sewer Department, Sanitary Board, Sewer Department, and we've actually done substantial stormwater work over three and a half miles of storm sewers, which when you consider that some of that is five-foot diameter pipe, pretty, pretty major undertaking, probably at a value of our estimated value or what the general fund paid the sanitary board for the work, in the, in the range of $1.35 million. So, there's a, that's since 1990. So, over 25 years, the city has made a pretty substantial investment in storm sewers. But on the other hand, there's an awful lot of storm sewer in the city, drainage in the city that's not regulated, that predated any of the ordinances. Some of those cases represent pretty unfortunate circumstances where they endanger private property or public property or maybe even the performance of the storm drain itself. We've had a policy, which seems fair, that the basis for doing work would be interest of the city in general, city property, flooding, city street, endangerment to other city property. But as a single purpose, not that it couldn't be an auxiliary purpose, we haven't done storm sewers to protect or benefit an individual property, unless the property owner financially supported that. And even then, there would be a lot of conditions related to that. And another point relative to our role is that we have very limited access to most of these flow channels. Most of the creeks, and there aren't very many major creeks, but there's a couple and several minor drainage ways. City doesn't have legal access to them, so if you get a homeowner or other resident that wants our involvement, we really don't have prerogative to go on that property and do work. I think the city has realized substantial benefit. I mean, we've had, what drove some of our earliest work was street flooding, and we've certainly alleviated that. I think it's pretty interesting that we had the fifth worst flood in Buchanan history in April, I believe. I get those numbers from Jay. But March, okay. And there was relatively little damage. I understand that actual flood damage was about $6,000. There was some more cost, but it was not water-related damage.
And two weeks later, Jay was saying it was the 18th highest water level to his actual flood.
So, you consider that you have had a flood of that magnitude and there was so little damage, and I think that's mostly attributable to Ambi and maybe Jay and Burl Smith and Rich Clemmons for their work with FEMA, but it's also partly related to some of our storm water work. So, I'm here representing the Sewer Department, the Sanitary Board, and we get, we're pretty involved in storm sewers. We're the party that you all have contracted with to build that $1.35 million worth of storm sewer. But our role is not storm water. It's sanitary. And in very limited cases, combined sewers, where the sewer purposely carries both sewage and storm water. There's very little of that in Buchanan. We are contracted to do the major projects. We also end up doing quite a number of miscellaneous repairs, a little bit of maintenance work, but we're essentially not funded. We're really by regulation required to spend monies that are generated by user fees on sanitary sewer issues, sewage collection and treatment, and not to mix those funds with general fund purposes. So, it's not, and I think we all view ourselves as primarily city of Buchanan and sewer department secondarily, so we contribute where we can, but financially, it's really a function that's inappropriate. However, the things that we do are very related to storm water. And all our pipes, you built sanitary sewer basically the same way you build a storm sewer. The hydraulics are the same and the planting and the mapping and the other functions related to proper operation of the stormwater system are functions that we do. We also have an interest because one of the big issues with sanitary sewers is the storm water that gets into the sanitary sewers. So, there have been times that building a storm sewer helped us keep unwanted water out of, out of the sanitary. So, that's direct benefit to us. The street department is also very much involved, and that's financially a little more legitimate because they are funded by the general fund. And certainly drainage is very important to them for the function of the streets and other city properties that they are responsible for taking care of. And they also do things like street sweeping and debris removal. We had an incident here recently where a resident pulled a lot of debris out of an open channel creek, and the street department was the one that went and picked that up. The administration at City Hall also is involved. Burl Smith, maybe more than Jay, but Jay as well. People come to City Hall and look for information and are referred to those people for assistance. It's important to note, too, that there are programs on the federal and state level. It's identified as MS4, 1M and 4S's, municipal separated storm sewer systems. It's a common terminology, MS4 communities, which I understand that you've heard seminars or meetings that have been discussed. And it's in, in three phases and hasn't reached communities the size of Buchanan yet. But every time that we're at a meeting that they talk about it, they say it's coming. The regulatory agencies that are looking to protect the waterways in the state are looking at controlling drainage from storm water. And it requires pretty aggressive management and control of drainage in the community. We have, we have a lot of problems in Buchanan. We've addressed a number, but there's certainly, we get regular complaints or channel improvement or culvert failure, repair, flooding, localized flooding, not, not the river backup flooding. There's probably some issues with the channel, which could cause more flooding, not just individual property issues. There's housekeeping issues, certainly aware that people pile debris along the creek and then wait for high water that washes away. That's, that's a source of pollution. And whether it is grass clippings or it's your old thinking, it's a source of pollution. So, there's certainly need, both in service to the community and to the residents, to address some of these matters, but probably relative to the federal and state programs that we seem to have been pretty successful as a community and often being a step ahead of the regular. the regulations. And we've already done it by the time the regulation comes into force. And I think this is a case where that would be so as well. We've also looked at what opportunities. We've talked to funding agencies. We talked to one today and it commented that you certainly are eligible to seek financial aid. And they hadn't received a number of applications for storm sewers, but none had ever been funded. So I don't think that it's, they don't rate, the way they're categorized, they don't compare very favorably to water projects or sanitary sewer projects. Because of this MS4 program the state has developed, and I believe that this is their state law to this effect, that you can establish a fee program that can extend outside the city corporate boundaries within a watershed. So like Tom Landis is concerned about watershed protection for the Buchanan River, you wouldn't be talking about the Buchanan River, but you could be looking at the watershed for Jolbo Run or Ratcliffe Run or maybe some of the others. And I think that one of the biggest issues here is the mixed responsibility between maybe the sewer department and the street department and City Hall, that there's different functions addressed by different people, in many cases without anybody having real responsibility for that issue. And I know it's, and we find it rather frustrating at times. We get complaints referred to us, and the people call and they say, "We've got a problem." We go look at it, and it's not within our responsibility, nor do we have any resources to address that problem because our focus and function is sanitary. And we could broaden that with some resources, maybe we could address some of it, but as it stands, that's pretty difficult. So it's just some comments about stormwater. We've had a kind of a rash of inquiries over the last couple of months, some of them of a pretty serious concern and really haven't had very good answers from people that have made inquiries. That's all.
Thank you, Sam. Any questions or comments for Sam from council?
Sam, I would add, I would let council know as well, Michael Doss and I had an opportunity and we learned about MS4 and the different classifications therein lies within the state. It will not be long before the city of Buchanan will be classified into that because they're looking at going all the way down, all the way down the line to even the smallest communities. It is quite an extensive and quite an expensive proposition when we're talking storm sewers and storm drains, something that I don't think a lot of, not just council, but perhaps the citizens don't understand that that is not part of the sanitary plant. I know we talk about it because they are the experts on how to lay that type of equipment or supplies that are needed, but they are a totally separate entity and unfortunately have been placed upon them the responsibility to address those. And they're quite honestly, as you can hear, frustrated and not seeking advice and looking for us to help fix that part of our infrastructure which has never been dealt with. I think at this point, though, Sam has given us a very good start on educating the process. We talked to the sanitary board today. We will also probably be talking with the water board and the others to find out how it is that we can address this from different aspects. Mr. Thomas, I would also suggest that, as you heard, and I'm sure you're here as people, we talked about storm sewer fees. We will get you information as well from your committee so that perhaps we can take a look at that infrastructure issue as well as things come down the pipe. Having said that, are there any other questions or comments regarding that presentation?
I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
I think that one of the real challenges that all cities have for the future is the deterioration of their infrastructure. And we have probably not adequately funded lots of different things over the years. We tend to rely on federal grants to a lot of our work. But I think the, in addition to the infrastructure aging, is you have mandates from the federal state government that are also going to require stricter compliance. And the bottom line is, it's going to cost all of us more money in the future to be able to adhere to what we need to do. And I think the citizens need to be aware of that. Our hands are tied to some degree that we have to do something, and we'll probably see fees in different areas that we don't have right now. I think that's, and we need to get that out of there.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Not out of there, but get it out.
I can't see, Ben was in the way.
Sorry.
Thank you, sir.
One quickie. Sam, is it possible that you could come to the next water board meeting and just share that with some of the new board members that are there, some of your issues and concerns?
Certainly.
I mean, I'm not the one that heads that, that would be Tom Landis, but I'll, he's not here right now, but I'll send him an email telling, ask him to invite you officially so you can come.
Sure.
Thank you, Mrs. Alba. Thank you, Mr. Libdo and Mr. Robb. Please thank your peers for all the work that they've been doing, particularly in our funnest weather time of the year with the rain. Mr. McCauley, sir, city attorney.
Just a real quick footnote on storm sewer discussion. When you hear a number that Sam mentioned, 1.35 million, wow, that's a lot of work. But that's over a 25-year period, and that's only $54,000 a year, and that's not adequate for what you'd want to accomplish.
That's historic cost, too.
Yeah, absolutely. So part of what your ad hoc committee might want to look at, Mr. Thomas, is similar to what we've done with the public safety complex fee in the past, we've looked at proposing street and sidewalk fees, maybe, I know people are being thied to death as it is, but if you're going to, short of taking it out of the general fund and not being able to keep up your parks and do your paving that you want to do and the whole bit, I think most of the time, if folks see what they're paying for, they're more willing to pay that extra buck on their utility bill, and that might be something to look at. We've talked about that before.
Is it?
Some other quick things. The mutual aid agreement that I hand-delivered back in February over to Lewis County, I called Sheriff Gissy's office again today to see where the heck it was, and he was out. And I really hope that by the time my time wanes on June 30th, we'll have that thing in our midst, but I'll keep weekly, doing my weekly calls to Weston and the Lewis County Commission to see where that is. You have in your package last week, the Service to Youth champion that we teased you with two weeks ago was Dr. Sarah Stankas. And Mr. Edwards and Mr. Doss and myself and a bunch of folks from the school system participated in recognizing Dr. Stankas. The next day, the Friendly Way Day honorary by the fire department was longtime firefighter Dave Wong, and you have the program and the proclamation for that in your package as well. We had a two-hour meeting yesterday with the insurance company, risk carrier, appointed counsel on the Lampinen lawsuit against the city and the water board. It was an interesting discussion, and I think the various city officials that participated in that made some pretty compelling points with the person, the attorney who will be preparing the answer on behalf of Buchanan. Suddenlink franchise, we had a TV cable board meeting earlier this week and continuing to work on that matter, including the development of a new lease for Cemetery Hill. Mr. Brown's here, he could report to you that we have now been, we're going to be controlled by the Luxembourgians, what do they call those people from Luxembourg up here? Altice has bought Suddenlink, is in the process. You want to comment on that?
Well, I can, but I don't have a whole lot to comment about. I know probably about as much about that as you do at this point, just from reading the news, because it's just really just happened. I mean, you know, it's Tuesday certainly was the day that they signed the letter of intent to purchase. So nothing has really transpired since that point, and it will, over the next, you know, six months or so, there'll be certainly activity for that transaction, and you will be getting information from Suddenlink regarding that transaction and the franchise and so on that we're working on and anything we provide. And to the extent that I can come back and bring you up to speed on it, I don't know anything about Altice other than what I've read in the newspaper like everyone else. So we'll just have to see how we go. So, you know, it's a telecommunications company, a very, a large one in Luxembourg, and they're not, they are providers of all things communications, wireless communications, video communications, telephone, you know, high-speed internet services and so on, so that they're not new to the business. They understand it very well, so look forward to seeing what, how that works out as we go forward.
Are they a publicly traded company?
They are traded from what I can read. Councilman Thomas, it is traded on, it's not traded on the American exchange, it's on the foreign exchange in France, so you might, you could probably catch it there. But obviously, they do not currently do business in the United States. This is their first foray into the, in the United States. The cable television market is kind of ripe right now for consolidation. That's not news, that's some, that's business in this industry, and certainly the trigger, from what I can tell, is the Comcast Time Warner deal that didn't go through, kind of made that market pretty volatile, and that's what made it attractive.
Somebody made an offer for Cablevision.
It might have been the same company. There's been, you know, just speculation, Time Warner, Cablevision, Time Warner's obviously open to doing something from what I, you know, can read. And so, you know, it'll be interesting to see what happens, just generally in the industry going forward from a business perspective.
They are built in years. These things happen all the time.
Yeah, it does occur, so.
Mr. McCauley, sir?
Just a couple of other quick things. I mentioned to you at the meeting two weeks ago, the water board will be meeting next week. We should be receiving the final draft of the performance statement that the outside accounting office has generated, and very soon thereafter, probably at your next city council meeting. Mr. Doss and others will be advancing a real quick, asking you to instruct me to prepare an ordinance that's going to increase the water rates to address the plant improvements, the new method by which meters will be read, and other things. So that's coming, you know it's, you know it's coming. Just a couple of other things, and I'll shut up. I would be remiss if I didn't offer some commentary about our good friend, Rich Clemmons, who suffered a fairly substantial heart attack yesterday. And fortunately, Rich didn't wait any longer than what he did, which was about four or five hours before he told his wife about it. He was lifelighted to Ruby Memorial, and they did an emergency stent procedure which essentially saved his life. And he has been struggling throughout the day-to-day with atrial fibrillation, which is the electrical neurological deficit in the heart. They're trying to get him stabilized that way so that they can do another procedure in the next two or three days. So everybody keep rich in your best thoughts and prayers. UKR pool parties are getting ready to start. Third Saturday night in June will be the first of those, and then June, July, August, there's a total of five of them. So I'll get those dates to you very soon. And the home reward and stuff, you all had some homework to start looking at that first draft, and the game plan would be to have a first reading of the first plank at the next meeting as well. I'm still doing some sprucing and some language cleanup, but I think we'll be ready for a first reading at your next meeting. That's all I have, unless you all have questions for me.
Thank you, Mr. McCauley. Questions, comments from Mr. McCauley?
Thank you, Mr. McCauley, for all the work done. We're keeping you busy lately, aren't we, now? I'm looking forward to the home rule ordinance, let's get those out of the way. Moving on to our correspondence in your package, council, you have the Quarter H Highway Authority memo, support to finish Quarter H by 2020. It's actually from Robbie Morris, who's the chairman of the Quarter H Highway Authority, and it's a new plan to finish by 2020. There's been some discussion of it in the paper. I know the county commission also approved that to endorse. I don't believe we need to make a, entertain a motion on it, do we, if we're going to support it?
I think there's actually a sample resolution maybe in your packet.
On the back.
I think they're asking.
I tell you what, why don't we take a look at that draft language? I know we all support it, but before, I didn't know there was a draft. Before, of course, unless council wants to take the opportunity to go ahead and make any motion now to support the draft language of this, which I'm never in favor of until we read it and go through it, but if you're so desiring, I would entertain a motion to accept the resolution draft ordinance from Mr. Robbie Morris concerning Quarter H Highway Authority.
Mr. Mayor, I have read that draft language, and would like to make a motion that we do support the resolution that Robbie has given us.
All right, I do have a motion, Mr. Thomas. I'd be here, we'll go to the discussion in a moment. Do I have a second? Very well then, I do not hear a second. I'll ask again, do I hear a second? Very well then. Mr. Thomas, sir?
Well.
Question or comment on that?
Yeah, the comment is that there is no way that the Quarter H is going to be completed by 2020. It's unrealistic. And, you know, I attended an Economic Development Authority meeting yesterday morning, and I think everybody that's involved with Quarter H realizes that 2020 is an unrealistic date. It's scheduled now to be completed either 2036 or 2042, depending on how you interpret the different funding scenarios. But, you know, the Blackwater Canyon is going to be just a very, very tough area to put Quarter H through, and there'll be all sorts of litigation regarding the environmentalists. So we're looking at probably at least 2025 realistically, and probably beyond that. It would help us to say it's something that we think should be done and done as, you know, as quickly as possible for economic development in our area and for convenience for our citizens. You know, it's part of the long-term Appalachia Highway scenarios based in the early 60s, middle 60s, and we're one of the last to have it fully completed. And I think 35, David, I know you're familiar with the Appalachia Highway scenario, but there's also Route 35 is one of the areas that are, I think the federal government will focus on those, too, but it's going to take a lot of time.
Route 35 has been approved, I believe.
It's still going to take a lot of time.
I agree with you on that. It's a very, it's a nice goal, 2020, and I know that the city of Buchanan would really like to see that done by then. It is actually going to be a much-needed and a much appreciated route for us and for a lot of, not just West Virginians, but for East Coasters who want to come over and visit on the other side of the mountain. So having said that, yes, we're.
Sorry, and I just want to say that even though we didn't make the motion to do that, anybody who travels and lives here in Upsher County or any of our neighbor counties, they can call 304-558-2000. That's the governor's office. Call and give your support to it. The more phone calls you get going in there will help us just as much as many letters.
And there's postcards that you can sign off and send.
I will also mention that in Washington, DC, we also put forth to our legislators the goal to have that finished first. Mr. Pugh, sir?
I'd like to comment about David's comments here. I don't understand why we as a council or as a citizen cannot be optimistic about getting our government to go ahead and go into public-private enterprise to complete a project such a project such as Quarter H. If it's a possibility that we could get some, some unusual type of financing such as this, then I think we should go ahead and support it. If we rely upon lawsuits and lack of lawsuits and fear of lawsuits and everything else, we'd never get anything done in this city, county, or state. I, I think we should have supported this strictly because of the unusual way of funding within public-private enterprise.
I'll tell you what, we can bring this back to, to council, please read through it. I think what's happened is, for myself in particular, I read the initial letter, but I did not see the draft copies and of course, I'm not willing to sign or approve anything until I've read through it and I know our council feels the same way. So, having moved that, I'd ask that you go ahead and take a look at it, review it, take a look on the internet, find out the information you can, come back at next council, let's see if we want to make a decision on that or not.
Bring it back on the agenda next time.
I will bring it back on to the agenda. Also in your packet, we have a letter requesting a street light at 57th East Main Street and Florida Street Side. There is a concern about the lighting there. This will be passed on to our Consolidated Public Works Board, but it will also, it was also information FYI for you. Under our consent agenda, we have in your packets the approval of the minutes for the May 7 regular council meeting, we have the approval of the building and wiring permits, we have the approval of the payment of the bill, we have the proclamation on Friendly Way Day, which Mr. McCauley alluded to, proclamation of the Starket Youth Center, Service to Youth Day, Mr. McCauley alluded to, and approval of the statement of concurrence permitting Garrett County MDDPS-911 to operate on a City of Buchanan police frequency. That is a request that came from our very own chief and from the Garrett County. As far as I understand, there are no objections to that from our police department, it's in your packets. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted. I have a motion by Mrs. Alba, do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a second by Mr. Thomas? Discussion on that, Mr. Pew.
I have a question about the Garrett County, Maryland. Will that in any way interfere or will we be able to hear their traffic? Will they be able to hear our traffic on that particular frequency?
From what I understand, no.
No, actually, Beiser Radio Service, who handles our police department's communications, when Chief Gregory received this, this correspondence from Garrett County, Maryland, in the statement of concurrence, checked with them, Garrett County, Maryland is about 110 miles away and Mr. Beiser assured Mr. or Chief Gregory that there would be no interference with this. And this is just a letter basically that is issued as a statement of concurrence to the FCC authorizing Garrett County, Maryland to proceed. The chief doesn't see any issue.
Was because of, in the old days of CB radios, we would hear traffic from California on our, on any given Sunday and I didn't know whether that was a case. Thank you very much.
I don't understand that kind of stuff. So, why would they choose Buchanan?
It's just the same frequency that they were assigned. I mean, I don't understand radio that much, but I'm sure there's, there's a whole bunch of frequencies out there and this is probably something that was assigned to them and then indicated by the FCC that, hey, there's another entity that has the same frequency and that you'll need a statement of concurrence from them to operate that.
I would support Chief Gregory's decision.
I would too. Even in radio stations, AM/FM stations across the country, you'll have some on the same frequencies.
It has to do with bandwidth now and the different.
Well, spectrum's only, spectrum is what it is and the FCC has carved out certain parts of that spectrum for certain purposes and in this case, it's the purpose of what you're doing with it. So, that's all there is. They can't go outside of it, so they have to duplicate it as long as there's separation, you know, adequate separation, so there's no cross-talk and. I will note in the statement of concurrence, in the statement of concurrence with the FCC, that's why I say, the very last meaty paragraph, basically under, Garrett County, Maryland understands that they'll take any responsibility to correct any communication problems or anything, so it's upon Garrett County, Maryland to correct any issues in their office.
Yes, any other discussion or comments on that?
Send us a bill, Peter.
Oh, well.
I have a second, I have a motion, all in favor, say aye. Pass. 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 Strategic issues for discussion and vote, I have a second and final reading of ordinance 390, Fire Protection Service Fees. Mr. McCauley?
Mr. Edwards, as you've noted, noted, this is the second and final reading of ordinance number 390. Since we have some newcomers to, relative newcomers to council, just remember that anytime the city does anything to increase a tax, establish a tax, or increase a fee or establish a fee, it must be done by ordinance. So, to comply with state code, this is ordinance number 390, the City of Buchanan, and ordinance, amending ordinance number 225 of the City of Buchanan, increasing the city's fire protection service fees. What follows are eight articles. We've been through these both during the draft presentation last month and the first reading two weeks ago. I would tell you that while ordinarily, the effective date on our ordinances are 30 days after passing, you're delaying this a little longer until July 1. So, the new rates would not go into effect until the beginning of the new fiscal year. You, a Class 2 legal advertisement preceded tonight's meeting, the last two Wednesdays, there was notice to the public about tonight as well as the public hearing. You held your public hearing, nobody showed up, so it is mature, it is before the council to consider enacting ordinance 390.
Thank you, Mr. McCauley. I would entertain a motion to, to approve upon the second, second and final reading ordinance, 390, Fire Protection Service Fees. Do I have a motion?
Make that motion.
I have a motion by Mrs. Alba, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Mrs. Kupari. Any discussion on that?
I would, I would again, you'll, I'll repeat what I said last council meeting and probably for, I can't remember how many years, but the, I don't think, I think this should be tabled until after the, I've been asked to chair a committee, ad hoc committee, to take a look at fees for the city and I think to go ahead and proceed with this fire fee increase is sort of dysfunctional from my perspective. And so, I would ask the council to consider tabling this until the opportunity to give a report for the first part of August in regard to our fee structure.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. I have a call for vote from Mrs. Alba. Mrs. Jenkins, I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
This is a roll call vote, if you're in favor of.
In favor.
Counsel Simmons?
Yes.
Counsel Alba?
Yes.
Counsel Barrett?
Yes.
Counsel Pew?
No.
Counsel Thomas?
No.
Mayor Edwards?
Yes. There you go, thank you very much.
I have a question now, please.
Can we get through this because you're going to get to comments and announcements in a minute. We have the approval and hiring of three probationary firefighters, Mr. Backson, Mr. Goff, and Mr. Cutright, effective start date July 1, 2015. I will also add that they have been through the Buchanan Fire Civil Service and they are the top three recommended candidates to the fire department for hiring. I would entertain a motion to approve the hiring of three probationary firefighters, Mr. Backson, Mr. Goff, and Mr. Cutright.
No move.
I have a motion by Mrs. Simmons, I have a second?
Second.
I got a second by Mr. Pew, any discussion on that?
Of course.
I got a call for question from Mr. Pew. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. Next, we have Resolution 2015-09, extending the current TV cable franchise of Sutton Lake for six months. I would entertain a motion, certainly approve Resolution 2015-09, extending the current TV cable franchise of Sutton Lake for six months. I have a motion by Mrs. Alba, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Mrs. Kupari. Any discussion on that? All right, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign.
Is that a roll call, roll call vote?
I don't think so.
Actually, it is.
It is a resolution, yes, resolution. Thank you very much, Mr. Pew, for bringing that to my attention again on resolutions. I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Counsel Simmons? Yes. Counsel Alba?
Yes.
Counsel Barrett?
Yes.
Counsel Pew?
Yes.
Counsel Thomas?
Yes.
Yes. All right, next, we are now down to our comments and announcements. Before we do that though, last but not least, and it was by her request, I might add, that she, she tolerated our hour and 45 minutes to give us a presentation. I would love to introduce to everyone in our audience, Mrs. Ann Warley, councilwoman from Beckley and the illustrious and prestigious West Virginia Municipal League President. Before she does, I'm going to steal a little of her thunder because I got a presentation for her.
I didn't expect that.
You can't get away with it all. You got a blue.
Oh, yah, trot.
And on behalf of the work that your organization, the Municipal League does, you yourself, we would love to present you this to have at the Office of the Municipal League to remember the City of Buchanan and we also have a special tee in the seat that we hope you would wear with pride and we look forward to seeing you in August.
I will be there.
Picture for everyone. Thank you very much, Ann.
You're up for a round. Right. Actually, I'm really glad that I stayed because I learned a couple of really interesting things. Number one, Sutton Lake and Beckley is also sponsoring our fireworks.
Yes, we are. Yes, we are, that is true.
And that was really interesting. We are also an MS4 community and that was real interesting to hear about the sewer and stormwater. Now, I have some goodies for you all.
Goodie, is it a raise?
Could you show us how to do that?
I'll wait.
In the bags are packets that I have made up for. You get one.
I get just a bag.
You get a bag.
You get the bag.
You can pass these down, but don't give the mayor away yet. Don't give away yet. The packets that I'm referencing are at bottom, I believe they're black.
I love getting these bags.
I don't know, you don't have one? Here, she can have one. No, no, no. Or share. I get him the wrong bag. This is the better bag. Okay, all right, the packets in there are a black and they contain Municipal League information that I'd like to go over real quick. These are for you all. Are you press? You're press.
Very good.
Thank you.
Are we allowed to accept this gift?
Yes, under the West Virginia Ethics you may. And press, just as a matter of information, for reference and all that kind of thing. Yeah, some cool stuff in there.
It's like cash.
In the catalyst packets, I have included the Municipal Handbook for Elected Officials. This is my bible, actually. It's excellent for elected officials, you know, just all kinds of ethical behavior, rules of procedure, just things you need to know about going into executive session, very good information that the league does put out for all newly elected officials. I've also included in everyone's the Municipal League Directory. There's 232 towns in our state. We have 100% participation in the league, which I think is very, very good. This lists all the towns, all their mayors, if they are a strong mayor, city manager type, they list the police, the counselors, the city managers, the clerks, sanitary board, so if your people have questions, this is a really good go-to, you know, information packet here. It's probably going to change some with the elections this year and next, but for the most part, it'll stay the same. Okay, in your packet, the West Virginia Municipal League has put out a pamphlet on their membership benefits and services and by Buchanan being a member of the league entitles you to lots of good stuff, a lot of good information. This is a brief synopsis of the things that we can offer to the cities around the state. On the back are the girls, Lisa Dooley, Kathy Burton, Debbie Price, who are the go-to girls, Amber Lynn O's. So, this is a real handy booklet about what the league does. When I became president last August, I, I felt there was a, my calling was to go to the Class 3 and 4 cities around the state and give information out because Class 1 and 2s, they're big, they know, you know, Charleston, they're always at the legislature and all that, but the Class 3 and 4s really don't know a lot about what the league, so I've tried to make my stops around the state. Broke my leg in March, put me back, you're the first city I'm back with, so I'm pleased to be here. One of the big things that we support is helping you guys with legislation and everybody on the council, all councils get the legislative update during the legislative session. This just happens to be one in February and it gives a list of the bills that, you know, we're working on like Home Rule, the sanitary, the above-ground storage tanks, dilapidated buildings, all kinds of legislative information. There's also a publication every quarter called League Lights and this is the one in April and this comes out every quarter and actually in here, we have our annual conference coming up at Ogilvy Resort and the information is here on to attend that. We have a lot of good seminars during that time, there's a golf tournament, but there's a lot of good articles in here. Really, I would really take the time to read, to read these articles. Debbie Price puts this together and she puts a lot of things to boost the local economy, just wonderful ideas, grant writing classes, things that are offered. Just six mayors discuss how to get creative on a budget. We all know, we all need money. Cities need money, they're crazy, you know, just some good information. One of the top things that most of the cities really, really like is to be on our access and that is to not reinvent the wheel and cause this gentleman right here to do a lot of more work because we have an ordinance repository. So, you can get on here and look for other cities that have ordinances like the dog ordinance, user fees, the fire, fire things. So, this is an excellent, excellent tool to not reinvent the wheel. The last thing on the one side is the calendar. Now's the time, submit your pictures. We've got Strawberry Festival pictures, I'm sure, and these are from cities all around the state. Get them in now, send it to the league and you might get on the calendar for next year. We're taking applications now. I know you've got some good pictures, so I just included that because it does have some dates in here, but you might want to see, you know, Lewisburg's in here, Beckley's on the back. Submit your pictures, get, get some pictures in of the, around. Yeah, send them, send them now. So, and this goes all to every city, all the counselors, I mean, all over the state. So, this is a great way to market your city and the Strawberry Festival, whatever things you have going on. Okay, you all should have gotten one of these in the last couple of weeks. This is the annual conference, what they're doing, like the workshops and things like that. We also have awards. We have a Clerk Order of the Year nomination form. We have a All-Star Community Program Award. If you think Buchanan could benefit from it, enter, you know. Golf tournament, come to, come to these, they have great workshops, they have an ethics workshop we have this year. Everyone's different. Andy McKenzie's going to be president, he's the mayor of Wheeling next year and he's going to be president, that's why it's. That's why it's in Wheeling. Great guy, very, very knowledgeable in the legislative arena. He was a... He was on the... I think he was in the senate for a while. Very good. We also have an annual report, which I did not include, but it tells you about the fiscal, you know, how the league is doing fiscally.
That's online, too, isn't it?
What's that?
The fiscal thing for the league. You did it online?
Yes. Oh, this is online, yeah. Yeah, I saw that. Do you all do the municipal court driving? Does it need an online driver education safety course?
No.
Oh, you have a municipal judge, don't you?
Yes, but we're doing it now.
Okay. This is another alternative, if you like to do that. There's not too many towns that do this because a lot of them don't have municipal judges.
Yeah.
So just an option for you. There are three things I put in your packet that are... We get questions a lot. The Ethics Act, municipal annexation, that's a hot topic in a lot of towns.
Oh, yeah.
And ABC is a parliamentary procedure, which is, I think, really, really important. But I think the ethics, I think, is the most important because we all want to do the best we can, represent our citizens in an ethical, you know, fashion, and get reelected. So I think we all need to be the best that we can be for our cities. That's pretty much it in a nutshell, just a lot of reading. But I do have one more thing. Mayor?
Mayor.
What's that?
Behind door number... You may have your pick. You may pick behind door number one? Door number one? Or door number... What door would you like to pick?
Door number one. I think I'm going to have to go with door number one.
Oh, I knew it. Door number... This is the big prize because you're the mayor. Well, what do you know? It is one of these handy dandy...
He could be lethal with that.
So you all have any... And congratulations on the home rule. I think that's awesome. You guys are really going to benefit from that. Beckley's working on it now. We hope to be one of the ones to, you know, apply here soon. So any questions at all?
Before you get... I do have a question, and I promised I wasn't going to have any comments, so I'm not going to have any comments because I gave my time up to Mrs. Worley. We... Michael and I got a chance to go to the Municipal League, I mean, not the Municipal League, the National League of Cities Conference.
Yes, I was there.
We did not realize... You were there? Wait a minute. We totally missed you then.
Yep.
Part of our dues from the Municipal League of Cities goes to that as well. We really gathered a lot of information from that and wish we'd have seen you there. Were there any other delegates there from West Virginia?
From Fairmont.
Somebody from Fairmont?
Yes, there was a delegation from Fairmont. In fact, I believe at the conference, the National League of Cities, there's going to be a rep from the National League of Cities to speak at one of the workshops.
That'd be great. It was actually a great event, and Michael and I loved it a lot, and I would appreciate maybe if the Municipal League, before the next one, puts out in the website or something who's already going so that maybe we could get together. Because there was a big delegations of states that got together to discuss how they were going to go to the legislature as a whole, which really impressed me. I sat in Texas for a while. I will open up the floor to any questions or comments for Mrs. Worley, please. Counsel?
I will tell you who's going to speak this year at the conference.
Okay.
Governor Tomlin, Shelley Moore Capito, Joe Manchin, Dave McKinley, Senate President Phil Cole, White House Liaison and Councilman Matt Zone, who's the second VP of the National League of Cities. Some of the workshops is going to be Freedom of Information Act law conflicts of interest, Ethics Panel, West Virginia Municipal Attorney Association's fees, dealing with aging infrastructure. That's going to be on. Downtown living, Main Street, tools for redevelopment, court cases affecting municipalities, excessive force, training police for qualifying immunity before it happens. We've got a lot of good stuff on tap. Come on up. It's at Ogilvy Park. It's beautiful. It's a lot of fun.
I'll come.
Okay.
Most of us will be there.
Yeah, please. You will have a lot.
Counsel, any questions or comments for Mrs. Worley?
Thanks for coming.
Oh, thank you for inviting me. I really enjoyed... You don't know how much I've looked forward to coming up after being on... Out of commission for almost two months.
Are you driving back to Beckley?
No, I'm staying down the street here.
At Byside?
Yeah. Yeah, and I went to eighty-eight for dinner. Oh, yum. I'm... Get deserved to go back.
Ann, if you could sit down for a few minutes, I have the comments.
Yes.
Let me get a picture with you with all councilors.
Yes, I want to get a picture.
So, counsel, don't roll a roll and immediately write off.
Yeah.
I do... We are down into the agenda where we do have our council comments and announcements. Mrs. Alba?
Just wanted to remind everybody about the upcoming Memorial Day services. You know, I'm with the American Legion. Saturday, there'll be one at Hemlock at eleven-thirty. That's the way of the country, Mount Olive Church. On Saturday, at eleven-thirty, there'll also be one at the Triangle in Rock Cave. And on Monday, which is the actual Memorial Day, there will be one at Mount Union Church at eleven-thirty, I believe. And then there'll be a little dinner. They always have what they call a dinner on the grounds. And then three o'clock at the City Cemetery, which we refer to as the Hevner Cemetery. And I would encourage everybody to come out and join us. I've said in the past, we don't do that on Memorial Day here in town. I don't know why. Union is packed, but I would love if some of the people of the community, city, city workers, if you can, take a few minutes and come out on Monday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Alba. Mrs. Simmons?
I just want to report that the city park has needed improvement, new playground equipment, new swings, merry-go-round. I noticed today that there was a bus, a school bus, from Webster County, and it was pouring down the rain, but those little kids were so excited to be there. And I just thought to myself, thank goodness we have new playground equipment because they were out there playing in the rain. And I think they came from another county to our town for a field trip. Really makes the statement.
That's great. That is cool.
Thank you, Mrs. Simmons. Mr. Thomas, sir?
Well, the council's prayers and thoughts are with Mr. Clemens' family.
Absolutely, yes.
Also, Brooklyn Waddell, who's a sophomore at Wesleyan, she'll be a junior this next year. She made first-team All-American on the softball team, and she was fourth in the country in batting in four eighty-three.
Yeah.
Which is phenomenal. Also, I have... I had contacted three or four people to serve on the committee that the mayor has asked me to chair. I'm respectively resigning my chair. I do not want to participate on that committee. I have strong feelings about what we did in regard to the fire fee and piecemealing our fees. And so, Rick, I won't be on the committee.
All right.
And I'll be calling the people I talked to to tell them that, you know, I don't know what the future lies as far as the fees are concerned, but I think we took, in my mind, we didn't do it the right way, so...
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Y'all have a safe weekend and a good... Remember what Memorial Day is for.
Thank you, sir. I'm disappointed to hear that, but if that's the way you feel, then we, I'm sure, we can certainly move on and find another way to go about those issues. We do have another town hall coming up in August. Maybe one of the other council members would like to step up and fulfill the chairmanship of that. If not, I'm sure we can figure out some way. So thank you, Mr. Thomas, for actually taking on that load at first.
Yeah. I will call the people I've talked to, make commitments tomorrow, and tell them what my position is.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mrs. Perry?
Yes, I want to thank Mr. Peter Gonarno. His... He had his class at West Virginia Wesleyan College do a small commercial for my Fourth of July event. And thanks to Mr. Peter Brown, hopefully it'll be on Channel Three pretty soon. I was very tickled over what they did, at no cost to us. And just wanted to say that I want to thank Mr. Peter Brown again for the donation for Stockard recently's Fourth of July. And my next meeting will be June the first. I'm still looking for volunteers. It'll be here at City Hall at five-thirty, and I'm looking forward to invite and help. I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Mr. Pugh?
Okay, I've got a list about seven pages long, so we'll just start going through them real fast, okay? David, I'm sorry you're resigning from the ad hoc committee. My vote in the negative on the fire fee was in support of your viewpoint, and you and I agree terribly sometimes on our fiscal responsibilities. And my vote was in support of you on that. I'm not against the fire fee in itself, but I did think that we should go with the way David said. That being said, then, Suddenlink, my goodness, Peter, I don't know whether people out here know how much Suddenlink actually does for our community, but last year when I was producing a Christmas show for the benefit of the Parish House and Cross Lines, I was looking for a sponsor, and the second day I got a call from Suddenlink saying, "How much money do you need?" And I told them, and they gave me a little bit more than I needed, and I certainly do thank them. And I believe they're going to support us again this year with the same amount of money. So keep in mind, it's around the first part of December, we'll have another benefit concert for the Parish House and Cross Lines. Okay, that's one. That's two. Ann, thank you for coming. I know what your... I know what your responsibilities are. I was... I've been president of the West Virginia Association of County Officials and the County and Circuit Clerks Association. I've organized meetings and banquets and everything and traveled throughout the state. I've been on the national committees for elections and everything like that. You've got a tough job, and I appreciate what you're doing. And I appreciate what the Municipal League does for us down here in the trenches, as they say, because this is where it starts, and sometimes this is where it ends. But my goodness, we certainly do appreciate what you guys do down there.
Well, thank you, and you all keep up the good work. And it's amazing to me that the towns and cities I've visited, how much everybody has in common, issues that we're all working on.
Well, we want to invite you back. It's facing on Friday evening sometime between now and the end of September for Festival Fridays, and I guarantee you, you'll not have a better time anyplace in this state. Another problem that I see here in the state, and that's been in not in the state, in the city, is the overabundance of RVs coming into our city. The trailer court out here on the Elkin Road, I can't... Carecoaster. Two names I get interspersed here for some reason. If you drive past there, it's lined with RVs, and they're this close together, and all other places in the town, I see them popping up. And it's the oil and gas people coming, which, Lord knows, we need the business. We're not against that. But this is putting an extreme stress on our utilities, and especially in that park over there. The electricity is being used to the max, the sewer system they've got over there's been used to the max. The water, everything with these RVs, and we do not have regulations against this. There's no way we can regulate what goes on with the RVs, how many they can put in a park. We never foresaw that this would become a problem. And the main problem is that this is just the beginning because this is just the small pipeline that's going through that Columbia Gas is putting through. Has nothing to do with that huge thing that's going to be coming through and going out of the Buchanan River and everything like that that we've talked about. The Atlantic Coast Pipeline. We need, as a council, to seriously consider some sort of ordinances or regulation for RVs in our city. I know that at one place in our city, there was an RV placed in the circle out on Carroll Street that had somebody residing in that, right there in that city street circle. They were moved. Ended up next to me on a house on Florida Street, which it's been moved since, too. Seriously, counsel, we need to discuss this and to see if we can come up with a solution. I don't know if it can be anything that's going to be retroactive. I doubt that, but we can certainly plan for the future on that particular issue. Yes?
I would suggest that you contact your legislators because they're going to have an end with the legislators up north that are maybe perhaps dealing with the same problems, just to suggest it. Also, Lisa Dooley at the league, she here, I mean, she's at that Capitol all the time, knows a lot, what's going on. I would really suggest you pick her brain and your legislators in the area.
Thank you for that information.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Pugh. I have one more thing.
Okay.
Okay. As you know, this meeting is an open meeting, which means that we cannot discuss anything outside the meeting among ourselves. We need to bring it here first. Now, I want to say that if I offended anybody by my question early on, but I was asked by a constituent to bring that question up. I am in the habit of every time I get somebody that wants to bring something to city council, I bring it, and much to the chagrin of some of my colleagues up here at various times. But I feel that my people out there, and this was a person on my street that asked me that, I feel that every question they ask is important to them, whether it's important to me or not, or whether I step on some toes. And I'm known for being very politically incorrect sometimes, but I want to bring that and to tell you that has nothing to do with my viewpoints. I didn't mean to embarrass anybody, but when I have a question from a constituent, I will bring it forward and I will ask it, and I hope that takes care of that portion.
Can I make a comment on that, Ron?
Yes, you may, David.
I think sometimes when you have a constituent that asks certain type of questions, you should have them say, "You come to city council and pose a question."
And they say...
That's my opinion.
I understand, I understand.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Pugh?
No, that's all. Thank you. Have a great Memorial Day.
I want to thank you for bringing forward the RV issue. It is something councilors are going to have to look at. We are now internally looking at all the options we could have. We will be bringing that to council at some point to see if there's actually anything we can do. I would love to see the reverse of the snowbirds here in Buchanan.
Yeah, man.
You know what I mean? So I think that's a good thing, but in this case, we're getting an influx. Thank you all for being out here tonight.